All right, we're back in session. It has been requested that number 11 under New Business be moved up to precede number 10 under Unfinished so Beverly can do her thing and then get out of here and go home.
We suspend the rules and move it to number next point of business.
Second.
Mr. Panoff?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
600.
Thank you. Beverly, come on.
Thank you for doing that. The Planning Commission has been going through all our ordinances and definitions and we have to give out CUPs and on some instances, we are saddled with revoking CUPs if they're not paying their taxes right or if they're breaking any of the rules. And what we found was when we were checking on some B&Bs, there's in our definition, it says that the owner-operator will live on-site. When I asked the attorney what on-site meant, I got sort of a vague look. When I asked the police department what on-site meant, he said it was too vague. He didn't really know. And so what we started doing was looking for the definition of on-site for B&B. And I gave you a packet of what we found about on-site. On-site means on property, on the land. And I gave you some case studies that also said that on-site was not across the road. And so what I would like for you to do, if you agree that this definition needs to be strengthened so that it can be enforced and so that everyone knows what they are allowed and are not allowed to do, is I would like for you to send this to the city attorney so that it can be put into ordinance form. I will tell you, when we started this discussion, we started with the process of maybe we should allow it within 200 foot so if they are across the street, that's okay, or if they're next door, that's okay. That was where we started. But then people that wrote the ordinances back in the year 2000 said, "No, we want residents in our homes. We want voters in our neighborhoods. We want neighbors in our neighborhoods." That was the reason that we wrote the laws so that you couldn't have too many businesses within 200 foot of each other and you couldn't have any more tourist lodging in R1. We want our neighborhoods protected. And so then we started looking at it from does the state actually makes us because of the way it's written, when we put on-site and we put premises, which is what is in our code book, when we put those words, that means property. So the state makes us allow them, if they own the property next door, that is still on-site, that is still on-premise. There's nothing I can do about that. The state allows that. But the state doesn't allow it or make it to be across the street. So again, we're trying to protect the neighborhoods. We're trying to put things in order the way that it was written, but it just, we feel like it needs to be strengthened. So if you'll agree with that, I just hope that you would send this to the city attorney so we could bring it back in ordinance form.
Mr. Berry, hand your hand up first.
Do we have any existing CUPs at this effect? I mean, I know there's rats, but straws.
Truth be told, there is one that actually falls into this category, but she has living quarters and her address is at her actual B&B. And now she's applied for weekly rentals across the street. So there's just one and I don't, because she has living quarters and she gets her mail across the street, I don't know how you could prove she didn't live there.
But you just said that across the street isn't on-site, right?
She owns a B&B here, she owns a land, a property here, and she owns a property here. And what she tells me is that when she doesn't have anybody in her B&B, then she lives across the street or spends the night across the street. But she has living quarters in her B&B and she gets her mail at her B&B.
And you can look in the door and it says if you want to run, call.
If you're asking if there's already some that, I don't think that I'm changing the law. I really don't think that I'm changing the law. Now, when the city attorney brings it back, he might say that we are and I might have to deal with that issue, but we don't think that we're changing the law. We think that we're strengthening the law.
Would it be strengthening it? Strengthening it if we're stating that when they have clients residing at the B&B that they have to have quarters there?
I'll tell you the truth about the B&Bs. There's a lot more issues with it that probably needs to be addressed in the future, like it just says must provide meals, doesn't say it has to provide breakfast. I mean, somebody could give you a Rice Krispie treat and say, "There you go." So there's a few more things in the BMB laws that need to be worked on and addressed. But that's going to be like with the BMB Association and us having a workshop and working on certain things at one time. We didn't bring all of that today. We just brought this one part that was causing us a little bit of trouble in the enforcement side of it.
Mr. Beal.
I think the important thing that we should strive to achieve is keeping our neighborhoods and not allow for the potential for, say, one wealthy person to come in and just take over block after block and only have one person living there. That destroys the fabric of the community. So I think strengthening the laws requiring on-site occupancy is what we have to keep as our goal in this.
Did we not get a negative response from our city attorney? And if we did, I recommend we have somebody else write the ordinance.
I haven't gotten any response from our city attorney at all. This hasn't gone to him yet.
Oh, I thought you said that he had said that...
No, I said when he writes the ordinance, he may come back and talk about that one that might need to be added, but I don't believe that we're changing the law. But I don't know that yet because it's not gone to him yet.
Can you, you don't have to do it right now, but could you give me the state statute number where they set out the law that you said couldn't be changed, the on-site?
Actually, it's, when you say on-site and you go to state code and you try to look that up, it's talking about property. And so then I did give you a lot of legal cases about property and what a property means is not an address. A property is all the land that you own as long as it's adjoining and touching. They call it contiguous in a lot of places. And that's, so there's not like a state statute that says on-site means.
Okay.
Because in one place in our code, it says on-site. In another place in our code, it says premise, but both of those are property.
Mr. Beal.
Some of this is obviously falling into tourist lodging, which we outlawed in the community. And that's what we're trying to keep from encroaching into the neighborhoods.
Honna.
Mayor motion of planning commission forward the proposed changes to the city attorney for preparation of an ordinance.
Second.
You for a discussion on? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries until...
Aye.
Okay. Now we go back to number 10 under unfinished business, which would be appendix on their own vehicle routes. Discussion. Yes, sir.
I'll ask the city clerk to clarify because I thought we had reached some type of consensus that the routes are incorporated in the franchising process so that it would be redundant to have appendixes.
Okay, I think she can read for the minutes to clarify that.
Following discussion of the subject you mentioned, you moved to strike this item from the agenda. Ms. Lindblad seconded. The motion failed because it was only 301 with Ms. Balance abstaining. And that's why it's still on the...
I would move to strike item 10 from our agenda. Second.
May I be seconded? You for a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stricken.
Abstain.
Okay. That moves us on to New Business. First one on top of the list is yellow bag enforcement.
Move to discuss.
Hang on.
Good.
Hold us up. Ms. Balance.
In our ordinances, it does set forth who is to use what kind of bags. When we look in the ordinance, we find, if you'll hold on just a second, I will find it. for collecting and transferring solid waste, have an identifying imprint designated by the city, are made available to the customers by the city or sold by a designated agent, can be sealed or tied securely at the top, and have a capacity not to exceed 50 pounds. This is 115 in my book. It is chapter 5.12. That is under 5.1201 definitions. So commercial bags means plastic sacks designed for refuse which are used for collecting and transferring solid waste and have an identifying imprint designated by the city. So that's one option for the commercial businesses. Also, other options for them are also approved containers or approved tags. And as we've talked about before, every night before trash collection, the next morning, I'm seeing bags that do not have an identifying imprint designated by the city. So obviously, there's apparently some enforcement issue right there because it says commercial bags that have an identifying imprint designated by the city. So we have businesses that are using unapproved bags, apparently. So there must be, there must be an enforcement issue. We also find, we also find under 51204 F number two, commercial customers will use bags, bundles, private containers, or commercial containers prior to collection. So back here, we see that one of their methods is using a plastic sack that has an identifying So the residential customers are having that enforced upon them. The residential customers are using bags embossed with the city's logo. And the commercial customers are not using bags imprinted with the city's logo. So this seems to be class discrimination. There's a sector of our population upon which these laws are being enforced and there's a sector of our community upon which these laws are not being enforced. So to me, that's a problem. I'll give somebody else a turn for a moment so we can discuss this matter.
Well, it's not a citywide collection. It's a countywide collection. The county is the agency that collects our trash. The county is the agency that dictates how they'll do it. The county doesn't have a problem with it. I don't know why Ms. Balance would want to encumber businesses with, well, let me back up. A lot of people use the approved containers, so that's not an issue. The yellow bags encourage recycling. Businesses are bound by city ordinances right now to recycle cardboard. So we are, and the city residents don't have to recycle. We don't have laws requiring them to do that. We do have laws requiring businesses to do certain things. I'd be all in favor of requiring businesses to do more recycling. And I think that's the impetus behind the way the system is set up right now, is to not force people to recycle, but to make it economically feasible for them to recycle so that what they don't put in the yellow bags goes in the recycling containers, thereby saving landfill and encouraging people to recycle. Now, if you want to go after businesses more than you already have, which is, to my knowledge, cardboard, I'm all in favor of recycling glass, plastic. So if you want to go that route, let's go that route. If you want to make business more expensive for business to operate in this community, no, I'm not in favor of that. Business already has a tough enough time trying to make ends meet and provide for the jobs in the community. So you have to understand what's behind the way the system is set up. So if you'd like to encourage more recycling from the business standpoint, I'm all in favor and I'm behind you 100 percent. If you want to make it more expensive for business to do away with their trash, no, I'm sorry, I can't support you on that one.
So what you're saying, what you're on record as saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, is you're in favor of it being more expensive for the citizens, but you don't want...
Don't address these comments to me, please. Address these to the chair.
I have the floor. Are you interrupting me again? Thank you very much.
Ms. Johnson, address that to me, please.
Well, where are you?
Because you're talking to him and I'm listening to him.
I was not talking to him. I was looking at my book and talking.
Go ahead.
So you're, my colleague apparently is in favor of making it more expensive for the residents, but he doesn't want to encumber the businesses with further expense. So he's in favor of class warfare, apparently, class discrimination, class warfare if it be. Says right here in our laws that the bags that the commercial customers should be using should be plastic sacks that have an identifying imprint designated by the city. The businesses are not using those. The businesses that are not using an approved container are not using approved bags. The citizens, the residents, it's being enforced upon them that they shall use these bags. It's not being enforced on the business. Now, I don't have anything anymore against the businesses than I do against the residents, but I think if our laws are not being followed equally for everybody, then that's, I see that as a problem. And I know we've had real business-oriented councils for the last several councils, and I'm here to stand up for the people, all the people, the businesses and the residents. I just want everybody to be treated fairly. I don't know why there would be a problem with that. That would seem to be what government's supposed to be for, is to make sure everybody gets a fair shake, to make sure everybody's treated equally. But like I said, we've had so many business-oriented councils for so long that the residents are getting the short end of the stick. And that does not sit well with me. Thank you.
Mr. Beal.
Well, I'll just let the words speak for themselves and people can decide how to interpret what I'm saying. But there are many people in this community that are very environmentally sensitive and feel that the system that we have for residential collections is a superior system that should be emulated by the rest of the state. It encourages people to recycle and that should be the entire motive behind it. If Ms. Balance wants to encourage more recycling from the business community, let's take that avenue.
Ms. Lindblad.
Well, if we're talking about being environmentally responsible, then in my opinion, we should figure out some way that people can buy garbage cans instead of plastic bags that are a certain amount, that contain a certain amount, and get people in the community to use those instead of using plastic bags because plastic bags are not environmental in any way, shape, or form. And I was recently in Fayetteville, and I know that the city of Eureka Springs cannot afford to do this, but in Fayetteville, the city of Fayetteville provides garbage containers, at least on the residential level, I don't know about commercial, and they provide a recycling bin. And, you know, when you're downtown, we don't get recycling pickup downtown that I know of. We don't get it. You know, we get our cardboard picked up, but we don't get our, you know, bottles and cans picked up. We have to transport those ourselves. But if we're going to talk about environmental, I would like to see us change from the plastic bags to some kind of a container, say, I don't know, like a garbage can that holds so many gallons. And that, you can't have more than that, but you can have that. And then that's a consistent thing that gets used over and over again instead of a billion plastic bags to be thrown into the landfill. Because I go, even in the residential areas, I go by people's houses, they've got six and seven yellow bags out there.
Sounds to me like we need a little bit more work from the Yellow Bag Committee and that we're trying to formulate approaches, and this is not the place to do it. We're running late. We've still got quite a bit on the agenda. Seems to me like this is more work for the Yellow Bag Committee, and I encourage them to go about the ways that Ms. Lindblad and myself have encouraged them to do. So I would like to move on.
Ms. Balance.
With all due respect to my colleagues, and I'm hearing you, I'm not in favor of plastic bags. I think it adds a layer of trash, it adds a layer of trash with every yellow plastic bag that goes into the landfill. That's another layer of plastic that's never going to biodegrade. It does not biodegrade ever. But what we're doing here and we're talking about here is some of us are dancing all around the issue that the law is being enforced on one sector of our community and not being enforced on another sector of our community. That does not sit well with me. It should be equal for everyone. If the law says the commercial customers shall use approved bags, tags, or containers, and the residential customers should use approved bags, tags, or containers, if we're enforcing that upon the residential customers and we're not enforcing it upon the commercial customers, that is class discrimination. The point I'm trying real hard to make right now is we're not treating everybody fairly. Some people are getting away with using black bags and other people are not. What's up with that? It's not right. It says, that's all for now.
I think the other point that somebody's forgetting to note is that the commercial customers are also paying, you know, about twice as much for their garbage pickup. I mean, they have commercial rates. So, you know, again, if they're being discriminated, they're being discriminated in their rates. The residential rates are a lot cheaper than the commercial rates, and that's because of the different containers that are being used. And, you know, so I think there is a, you know, we've already discussed this over and over again. And I agree with Mr. DeVito about the recycling. I think that's where we need to go on. It's not the yellow bags, it's recycling.
Ms. Beal, you had your hand up, ma'am.
Well, just as a side point, not to draw this out, but for something for the committee to consider. When we moved here six, seven years ago, I inquired in regards to getting a container. And they said, "Sure, but you still have to put your yellow bags in it." I think that if there's an avenue of getting a container, then that, I think, could eliminate a whole lot of problems, other than maybe trash flying around out of the garbage trucks. But I would request that the committee look into that, that if in fact, and I believe a couple of people down the street from me do have a container that's provided by the city, but then they are required because of this contract to put their yellow bags in that container. And that's one of the reasons I didn't get the container. And it would be nice if, you know, if you could take biodegradable bags or whatever and put your trash into it and still recycle and still help both the citizenry and the environment.
These are all kinds of issues that are, should be put together and discussed at contract time, aren't they? I know Jerry Landrum and the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Committee, he's having really good luck working with Phil Jackson and coming up with some recycling ideas of his own. He's someone to work with. He knows the route.
Ms. Balance.
Again, we're dancing all around the issue that our code says a certain thing and it's not being addressed on certain entities. There are different ways we could probably deal with this. We could, we could change our ordinance to say that nobody has to use imprinted bags or we could enforce the ordinance so everybody has to use approved bags, tags, or containers. There are different ways we could deal with this issue, but as it stands now, it is discriminatory the way it's being enforced. So I'll try to get a meeting of the committee set up within the next three or four weeks. I will announce when it's going to be. Anybody who wants to come and talk with us and help us try to find some solutions to these problems is welcome. And if we could get some enforcement going on to enforce the codes that we indeed do have right now, that might be helpful. So in the interim, I would move to request that the mayor facilitate our code being enforced across the board.
Any further? Any further? That's a motion. She needs a second.
Second.
No. Further discussion? I'm going to read something from Phil Jackson and April Shaw. It's Carroll County Solid Waste. Phil Jackson to April Shaw, "I am not aware of any communication issues between the city and Carroll County Solid Waste that would result in black bag commercial, either two-bag or seven-bag service not being enforced, the monthly charges on the customer's water bill, and if they have excess trash, it will be reflected on the spreadsheet that is factored to the city at the end of each month. Please let me know if there's a problem to be aware of." I then ask April, "Do commercial properties do not have to use of yellow bags? Is that correct?" And she replied, "Yes, that is correct." The yellow bags are for residential. Carroll County Solid Waste recognizes the black plastic bags as an approved container before pickup from businesses. Yes, ma'am.
Then may I ask why our code says "bags commercial"? And this is definitions. Bags "commercial" means "plastic sacks designed for refuse which are used for collecting and transferring solid waste, have an identifying imprint designated by the city." This is what our code says. You've asked somebody who doesn't have any expertise in our code, who probably hasn't read our code book. You're talking about what our code book says. You've asked, you know, a secretary. It says right here in our code that this is what it should be. It's not being enforced.
Okay.
It says right here in the code.
I read you what I was given, so...
Well, I read you what's in the code.
Okay, I got you. So, who says... Any further? Ms. Pennell.
I'd just like to comment that the motion that was made is already in code that it is up to the mayor to enforce all ordinances in city code. I think it's mundane as far as having another motion. I'm sorry. It's a motion being made that's already in code.
Yes, ma'am.
Then might I ask my colleague if he has any suggestions as how we could encourage our law enforcement department to enforce our laws?
Well, since it's up to me now, then I'll get back with Phil Jackson and we'll figure it out, unless the committee wants to do it. I believe the committee was requested to follow up on this also. So, if the committee will take care of that, then I'll get with Mr. Jackson. I'll follow up on the other end, and I guess we'll have to meet in the middle soon. That work? Okay.
There's a motion. And a second.
Okay. The motion was...
Since indeed he's right, it's redundant, because the law enforcement arm of our government should be enforcing our law, and this is the law, I will withdraw my motion and just hope that the law enforcement arm of our government does the right thing and enforces our laws.
Ms. Lindblad, you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, no further. We'll move on. Move to discuss... Move to discuss number two.
Two.
Okay.
Second.
The second. The update taxi franchise workshop. Ms. DeVito.
We've held two workshops. We've had about half council in attendance at either workshop. Some of the points we've talked about is inspection, a yearly transportation meeting with all of the transportation providers in the community so that we can integrate and better serve how we move people about the city. Talked about the hours of operations of the cab, so as not to require him to be on duty, say at 4:00 a.m. in the morning, that there be reasonable hours. Speaking to the portion of the ordinance about meeting the need of the people in the community. We discussed jumbo cabs, which a lot of communities have, rather than having the city taxi make two trips if he has a vehicle large enough, that we expand our ordinance to include verbiage relating to jumbo cabs. We talked about whether we would require a meter or a rate schedule, say, from going from zones to zone. I just want you to all be aware that this is just the initial stages of discussing the taxi franchise. I hope you've all received the variety of ordinances dating back to 1910 or somewhere in there. I thought it rather interesting that almost 100 years ago, it was $100 for a cab license, and now it's half that. So, somehow we've managed to go against the flow of all of the commerce of communities all around the country. Anyway, we haven't set a date for the next meeting, and I hope we can all attend. I'd like to get a comprehensive taxi franchise established, try and address as many points we have this opportunity presented to us, and I just hope you all can attend the next meeting.
Thanks, sir. Any further? Ms. Pennell.
Anybody has any copies of all those that I read about in the paper, I'd sure lock a copy.
The lady will be glad to provide you with more.
Nothing else. We'll move on. Number three's been postponed. That moves us to number four, the auditorium agreement for 2013.
Move to discuss.
Second.
The floor is open. Ms. Pennell.
I'm sure Mr. DeVito could probably address this better, but from what I've read since I've been back in town, it appears that the CAPC is looking at a three-year commitment to the auditorium.
Correct.
If that is correct information, I make a motion that this table support the mayor entering into discussions with the CAPC to extend the current contract for an additional three years.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Lindblad.
Yeah, before the mayor enters into discussion about it, I think that, you know, we should maybe discuss what we want in this agreement, since we're going to be the ones approving the agreement.
Ms. DeVito.
This is a contract that's already in existence, and you can get a copy of it from the city clerk to show what's already in the contract. I can't speak for the commission, but I have a feeling that the way things have been going and the success that the CAPC is having, that I'm hoping that the CAPC will continue to take on the responsibility it has already for the auditorium. As I said, I can't speak for the entire commission because we don't have a contract yet. You'll see the contract before it's voted on, so you'll know what's in there, and that may be the appropriate time to discuss the particulars of it so that you have a working document to see what you can either delete or build upon. So, rather than discuss it at this point, I would just encourage the council to agree. It's tough to go with a one-year contract, because when you're trying to develop a marketing campaign for the city and contracts for some performers have to be let eight, nine months out, that does encumber the booking of acts for the auditorium that a one-year contract doesn't provide. So, it is a good idea to go with a multi-year contract to ensure the stability and to allow what is providing... What is proving to be quite successful at this time is the talent that's being booked into the auditorium without great expense, and I think just the number of over 125 days this year that it's being booked shows that it is succeeding, and I would like to continue that momentum in that process. So, a three-year contract would be a great way to go.
Any further? Mr. Riffield.
I understand. It seems like right now we have no option except to extend the contract. I don't know about three years. The numbers... The number... I mean, I like the way it's going, but the numbers don't show that it's something we want to be committed to for three years. I think we ought to discuss other options. And we can do that when you're talking about it, when we see the contract, but I don't know, but I can't be behind three years with the numbers I'm seeing. I mean, I like what's going on, but with the numbers I'm seeing, I can't get behind it.
Ms. Pennell.
From a contractual standpoint, one thing that CAPC and the mayor's office may want to consider, 24 years of contracting, you can consider a one-year with one-year options, two-one-year options, something like that. So, I just threw out the three years because that was the commitment that made it seem that the CAPC was willing to discuss, and we can look at it as the proposals are brought back to the table.
Excuse me.
Would Mr. Pennell consider just verbiage to a multi-year contract as opposed to just...
End of motion. So, multi-year contract.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion, ma'am? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'll abstain.
Four-two.
Four-one-one.
You know, I want to change my... What did you say? I would like to change my...
What would you like your vote to be?
I would like to change mine to no.
Okay, so we have three, two, one, and Karen is a no, and who is the second no?
Me.
Thanks. And Lenny was abstained?
Yes. Abstained.
Thank you. So...
I'm understanding that y'all still want me to go to the CAPC and work with them on the contract. If this fails, because I'm going to have to vote yes on it to make it pass, if I voted no, I can't vote no. So, we have to do something with it so my vote is yes. Trying to get all the ducks in the row here. Number five, the voting changes for Alderman.
Move to discuss.
Second. Floor is open. Ms. Pennell.
There were two issues covered in this idea, both voting by ward and also changing the number of years. I believe both of those are almost to the... At the speed of light that this table operates, we're probably too late. I move to take this off the table because we cannot commit, and outgoing council cannot commit an incoming council to something that they may not be able to live with. So, I propose that we take this off the agenda, if I can get my second or to agree.
I would second that strictly from a time standpoint, that the November election is just too soon to get all of this and have the election commission respond and set up all of their necessary things by November.
Okay. Further discussion? Ms. Lindblad.
Well, you know, we already voted to approve the change in the voting districts, and this is a change that's been needed to be made for a long time, and I don't see where it would interfere with another council. We're talking about procedure for electing a council, and the other council is going to be elected. The next council will be elected under the rules that we already have because we are too late in getting this done, but this is a long-range thing for the city, and I don't see where this council can't shoulder the responsibility of making changes that, in my opinion, needed to be made a long time ago. And a lot of citizens want it to be made because they don't want people from other wards electing their representatives, and they also don't think about the entire council representing them, which they should right now, since the whole city votes on the council people. So, we are really not just from our ward, we are really representing everybody in the city, and I think it would be who... For candidates, it would make it easier for them to run. I think more people would run. And when I went door-to-door years ago, I had a lot of people ask me why in the world they were voting on people on the other side of town that they didn't even know, because a lot of people can't... Cannot campaign door-to-door to the whole city, and a lot of those people came from places where they were, you know, electing out of the ward. And we nominate out of ward, we should elect out of ward, and I don't see where we can't make this change, and if this change doesn't work for the city, it can always be changed back. But we've been going under this other system for a very, very long time.
Excuse me.
Just to be clear, we can't get this on the November ballot?
Yep, no we can't.
Okay, so let's table this for another time.
Ms. Pennell.
That came about from our Gold Workshop, which was a long time ago, which had... We've been able to address it sooner, could have possibly happened, and that's all I meant. We need to maybe slow down on it and approach it the right way, that there isn't any intent, because some people look at this and say, "Oh, they're trying to change this before the election." No, that's not going to happen. Yes, I agree, we ought to continue working on it, and I agree with everything that my colleague from the other part of Ward One just made.
Ms. Valance.
I also think it would be a good thing to discuss, talk about, maybe come to some... Maybe do some changes. Another thing that I would like to see us talk about when we're talking about it is staggered terms.
That was part of the whole thing.
Okay. And four-year terms possibly also, three or four-year terms. I find that when I was a new councilperson, it took me quite some time just to get over the learning curve, and it seems like if people had longer to understand what they were doing and then grow into it and be comfortable with it, it might be good for the representation of the people. So, those are a couple of ideas and thoughts I have on the subject.
Mr. Berry.
If you wanted staggered terms, it's also got to go before a vote of the people. It's got to go before the vote of the people for four-year staggered terms.
Could you tell me what it's in?
It's in the book.
1443-403.
State statute.
It's a state statute.
I don't remember that part.
Well, you know, I don't want to have to... Let's, you know...
Again, we're getting late. We can table it. That was... The whole thing came about through our Gold's workshops, and that was voting by wards, running in wards, staggered terms, four-year terms, the whole ball of wax, so it can be tabled until a further discussion.
Would you please repeat your original motion, sir?
It would be tabled for further date.
Okay. And Mr. DeVito, you second it?
Second. Until when?
A further date.
1443-312.
Prefer?
1443-12.
1443-312.
If no further, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, I'll say aye.
Aye.
To table it?
No.
No.
Okay. Four-two-zero. Number six is moved up to unfinished business. Number seven is the Conway Spring marker. Motion to discuss.
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Floor is open. Ms. Berry.
You know, we've gone through this issue before. We really... City Council has no authority over the parks and recreation. The 12.04.03 says that they shall have the complete, full and complete charge of the parks, the complete authority to build, manage, operate, maintain and keep in good solid state of repair, so I think we're just spinning our wheels on this one.
Ms. Valance.
1443-502 says the council shall have the management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation. Now, either the statute you quoted is correct or the statute I've quoted is correct. One of them has to take precedence over the other. This here says the council shall have the management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation. So, I'm not an attorney, and I'm sure we could find an attorney to argue your point. We could find an attorney to argue my point, and one of us would come out on top. One of them has to take precedence over the other. This here says the council shall have the management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation. So I'm not an attorney, and I'm sure we could find an attorney to argue your point, we could find an attorney to argue my point, and one of us would come out on top. I would think that the council, being an elected body, should probably have management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation. These two, these two statutes conflict with one another. They do, they do it.
Mr. Mayor, they do not. I got recognized, I got recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Will you guys get your boots off my neck?
Ms. Vito, so we can't tell when you stop and when you start? We have no idea.
Then maybe you could figure out a way to get your boot off my neck.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
You have your boot on my neck constantly.
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
Move to adjourn.
That's because.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of here.